The purpose of this meeting is that it's a workshop meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We are looking at ways of making applicants' lives easier via a process that can easily be followed and can easily be verified. So that's what we're doing tonight.
What does this?
You can stay as long as you like, or you can leave whenever you wish.
Do you know what this zoning board of appeals does?
I have an idea, yes.
What does this?
You're next door.
You can say it.
Carl, give them a definition of what the zoning board of appeals does.
Oh, the zoning board of appeals is the last court of appeal for a property owner who wants to do something with the property that the current zoning code may not permit. And if it doesn't permit it, they can come here and ask for what we call a variance from the code. There are two kinds of variances. One is a variance called an area variance that would deal with the problem of physical property. May I put an addition on my house? May I put a garage back there? How much space do I need for fire safety? That sort of thing. The other type of variance is a use variance, where the applicant is seeking a use that is not permitted in the code, but that in the mind of the members of the ZBA may seem to be reasonable and not inappropriate, and something that when the code was written, they hadn't thought about. So the zoning board has the power to grant those kinds of exceptions to the code. It has one other function, and that is if there are appeals to the decisions of the building inspector's office, those appeals are made to this board, and this board deals with those appeals, either upholding the decision or not upholding the decision of the municipal officer, and frequently working with the code to say in effect, we believe that the code needs to be changed. There's confusion in the code. There's contradiction in the code. The code is not clear. Those things sometimes arise when the issue of interpretation is raised. The last thing we may do in a case like that is we may be asked to spell out, in our judgment, what the code really means. And that's a lot more difficult.
It's a great entry into a workshop meeting.
Yes.
Is this board elected or appointed?
Appointed.
Appointed.
Yeah, we're appointed.
Yes, we're appointed, and we serve gratis. We are not a paid board. And I point that out because there are communities in which the zoning board of appeals and the planning board are paid members.
We are paid with the gratitude of our fellow.
Well put. Well put, if not true. Abuse is more likely.
And I'm not a member of the zoning board of appeals. I'm the village trustee liaison to the board.
Yeah.
So there are five members of this board, but I'm not one of them.
Yes, we have one member who is absent tonight. She's out of town.
I understand.
She takes information back to the village board.
Or answers questions if I can. Most of the time, they know more than I do.
And we're missing an alternate, are we not? We still, we don't have an alternate.
Yeah, we're shy on alternate, that's true.
If you're looking for an alternate.
Yes.
I have an alternate that I would like to propose.
Good.
And so how do I go about doing that?
You write a letter supporting the person, and the person will be interviewed by the trustees.
Okay, so do I send it to the mayor?
Yeah.
No, to the village clerk.
Oh, to the village clerk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you could send it to your clerk, and she would take care of it with the village clerk, which is what I would do.
Okay, then I will do that.
Splendid.
I will send. And he's a really nice fellow. He's just finished a master's in public administration. No, I mean, but he wants to, you know, become involved in the village.
Good.
And he lives in the village.
He lives in the village, yeah.
Perfect.
Great guy. And does he have to, before you recommend him, does he have to, like, give a letter of interest? I don't know.
I think she would recommend him first, and then...
Okay. Yeah. Oh, that sounds great. Okay, so I will talk with him and get the contact information and make a recommendation. And he's like half the age or a quarter of the age of all of us.
Another star you're crowned.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you, since you brought all the material.
Yes, I, as you can tell, I was confined to a chair for a while. So what I did was I looked at other villages in New York State to see what kinds of forms they have. I think that we confuse things a little bit right now by having a single form for area variances, use variances, and appeals. And I didn't actually find anyone who had a form for an appeal in New York State, but I did find this one from Burlington, Vermont.
Ah.
And so the idea I have is not that we necessarily copy this, but I believe we should have a form on which an appeal is filed, and we give people a little bit of information on the form about what's going to happen with the appeal. So I think, you know, the violation property address, the location of the violation at the site, and the date and time of the alleged violation, that's reasonable information. I don't know that the alleged zoning violations match the kinds of alleged zoning violations we have. I think unmet conditions of approval and property inconsistent with approval plans is probably a lot of what we encounter, and maybe we want to break that out a little bit more.
I get the impression that this form was designed for things that were done or not done by the municipal person in charge.
No, yeah, yes, I think that is true. It's a zoning enforcement complaint.
Okay.
So if the zoning is not enforced... But I mean, I don't think the satellite dish and antenna sort of thing is really our problem. But, you know, if we could think about what kinds of appeals have been brought before the board, and then sort of tailor that section to match more the kinds of appeals we have people bringing to us.
Would this be, would this go to us, or would this go to the building inspector?
That's what I was just going to ask Dave.
This seems to me that this would go to the building inspector, not to the ZBA.
Good point.
And who would fill it out?
Well, if you have someone who has a problem, say, with noise coming from a business that shouldn't be.
Right.
Operating, I guess the first step is to complain to the zoning, the code enforcement officer. Then I guess what we need is also a form if someone wants to complain about the code enforcement officer's decision.
Yes.
And so...
That's more likely to be the kind of complaint that comes to us.
Yes, okay, so let's change it.
So you need to tailor it that way.
Okay, so it is a...
So the first level would be, I citizen would fill this out, take it to the building inspector or the building enforcement, code enforcement officer, hand it in, and then I would simultaneously send it to the...
No, I think you have to wait and see if the code enforcement officer is going to...
So you need to then have a part down somewhere that the code enforcement officer has investigated.
Yes.
And found no violation.
Okay.
Found there is a violation, because then that would tell me, okay, it stopped there, and nothing's been done, and now I pursue it to the next step.
So that's what we need for this two-mohawk deal. Did you get your two-mohawk? Did you get your papers out of the office? Did you look at them?
Yes, I did, yeah.
All right, well, that's what we're talking about, then.
Well, I think that what they're doing is they are then appealing a decision that has been made by the code enforcement officer.
Right, but I think that you need, what you're talking about is you need a form that they would fill out and give to us complaining about the decision that the building inspector made.
Yes, I think that should be a separate form. Oh, really? Yeah, I think you want to have something like this that starts somebody saying, "I believe that code is not being enforced in the village."
Right.
A separate issue is the code enforcement officer made a decision with which I disagree for these reasons.
And that would come to the ZBA.
Yeah.
This form, a form like this, would go to the building inspector.
Yeah, second form. And then this would be, this would be the record of the action and the complaint on the other side of stuff.
And then this would be to you, but...
Yeah, now, are we overstepping our bounds by recommending that the first form be created? Is that...
No.
No? Okay.
I think Paul's in the wrong meeting. Paul, are you looking for?
Yeah.
It's in the small room.
Thank you very much, Sally.
This is ZBA. You can stay.
I have Carl here, I say, well.
But if you get bored, come on back.
And I have a choice.
No, I think this is very appropriate as an action by us.
Okay, all righty. So then a second one would be to protest the code enforcement officer, and I can try and...
Who would that go to?
That then would come, oh, yes, no, no. I think that if somebody wishes to appeal a decision of a code enforcement officer, we are the appellate body.
Right, right.
And while we're talking about forms, I'm sorry to...
I mean, the form to choose now is the one that's generic and has everything in it.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that leads to a lot of confusion when people come before us. They think they sometimes conflate area and use variances because in a sense they're...
Unless you have a lawyer.
They're conflated on the form.
Yes.
I just, it's a brilliant thought that flew through my mind.
I mean, there are all sorts of levels here.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the one that Dave is talking about is a very different level than some of the others that you've had. So...
I'm not quite clear on that.
In terms of the appealing the decision of the code enforcement officer.
I mean, a violation of an SUP.
Yes.
Is different than appealing a decision that the code enforcement officer made regarding a developer.
Yeah.
Two different animals.
Yeah.
But I think that if you...
Can you see the form being used, interfaced that way?
What I would see...
Or do you need different forms?
I think you need different forms.
I do too.
So if you have one, you could have a situation where the neighbors, where, you know, someone wishes to, first of all, request that the code enforcement officer pass judgment on whether an SUP is being properly respected.
Yes.
And you need that to happen first. Not to get too bureaucratic about it, but I would also like on that form something that the code enforcement officer fills out.
We agree with that.
So that, you know, there's a written record of it, and it's clear that it's got to be that written record, that it can't be changed verbally on the fly, that the only way the code enforcement officer makes a decision is in writing. That makes sense, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Does to me.
And I think that's important for the village to have that process and to have it, you know, clear that when the code enforcement officer makes a decision, the decision has to be rendered in writing, and it has to be rendered in writing on this particular form.
And the reasons given.
Yeah, and the reasons given. What we used to say was if it didn't happen on paper, it didn't happen.
But Katie, the one that Dave mentioned.
Yes, that's a separate thing.
That's a separate type of situation.
Yes.
That is...
Sorry, me.
You're ringing, dear. That is an appeal by a developer of a decision. The developer, and that really is planning board... Okay, planning board said X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Developer chose to not do Y.
Yes.
Okay. Planning board, developer is going to appeal the X, Y, and Z. Basically, the Y, because the building inspector, the code enforcement officer said you didn't do something. Or you did something, and that's a no-no, whichever way it goes.
Yeah.
That's a whole 'nother process.
Yes.
Than what you're talking about. You're talking about me, resident of Newpaltz, having a problem with a neighbor.
Right.
Who has an SUP, who...
So what we're talking about, then, is a second form.
Yeah.
That is the appeal form.
Right.
Right.
And there could be several things that get appealed. I believe someone could appeal a planning board decision. They could appeal a decision of the building code enforcement officer, I should say. I mean, let's just say building inspector, code enforcement officer, we're using them as synonyms, so we'd have to keep correcting ourselves. They could appeal a decision of our own? No, they can't, no, 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 no.
No. Sorry, this is the board of last row.
Just those two, okay. So they can appeal a planning board decision.
They could wonder about it, but they can't appeal it.
Yeah. Well, they sue the village. Yeah.
Well, always an article seventy-eight is possible.
Yes, so they can appeal either the planning board decision or the code enforcement officer decision.
And that appeal form is your standard one. Does that need to be modified? The one you currently use? Does that need to be tightened?
I think we ought to ditch the one we presently use.
Yeah, I think we want...
Yeah, I think it should, I think it should be something that's just has the ingredients on there. It's simple, and anybody can understand it.
Yeah.
Because if you need a lawyer to interpret it, eh-eh.
We don't like it. Okay, and I... This is nice on this Burlington form because it says, "This form to record and report and explain what it is." And so the same sort of explanation would be good on an appeals form. Yes. And any form. Yeah, and citing the relevant part of our...
Do we have a blank appeals form that's used among us?
No. I mean, what ends up happening is somebody gets one of this generic form that we have, and they cross a lot of stuff out and kind of make up the fields they need in order to...
So you need to create a field form.
So we need to create a form that's easy to fill out. Everybody can understand what it is, and we have, you know, crucial information, like the address of the place, the time when the, you know, I mean, we don't have...
Gee, why do you want that?
We already have some of that basic stuff on there.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, there are elements that I liked in all of these forms. So I, you know, in my copious spare time, if you want, or does anybody else want to volunteer to try and...
Uh-uh.
Knock these up? Well, let's see what else we've got by the end of the session.
Well, what else do we want to deal with here? Because I have to leave no later than eight-thirty.
Okay, well, basically what I want to do is I want to separate out the appeal for an area variance from the appeal for a use variance.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
And what I would like to have on the appeal form is, first of all, a very clear identification of the property being appealed. Now that... What are we looking at now? Cannondagwa? Yeah, look at Cannondagwa for, yeah, for a moment.
All right, we're skipping over the town of Newpaltz.
Yeah, skip over the town of Newpaltz, although... I do like the way they listed out the area variance reasons, but let's skip over that for a moment. In Cannondagwa, I like the fact that they, you know, ask you, like, the house number, which side of the street is it on? What is the zoning district, the tax MAC number, and the description of the proposed request?
Okay.
I mean, I think that's good stuff to have. But most people won't know that.
But you can find it out. I mean, you know your house number, and you know which side of the... Hopefully, you know which side of the street it's on.
Okay. Yes, I don't think these are unknown.
And your tax MAC number is on your, on your tax...
That's right.
You know...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think any of that is difficult.
The only, the only one that they might not know that they'd have to call up is the zone district. Is it R2 or B1 or XYZ7 or whatever?
And certainly the building inspector, the building department could help with that.
Sure.
I think asking for the applicant's name, address, you know, contact information. We've had a couple of these where the property has not changed hands yet.
Yes.
I think you need what you have in your own form, though.
That's not our own form. That's from the town.
Okay, in the town. I think that is useful.
Oh, that?
The date received.
Yeah, okay, let's highlight that. We'll keep that. Date received, fee paid, date of hearing. I don't know if they need a local file number, but...
I think, I think they use a file number.
Do you use a local file number?
Kelly.
No.
No?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I am checking.
Yeah, I think they do.
Yeah.
I think they have a...
When it comes in, it's for records.
The zoning...
Yeah, but I think that's what...
Oh, like just a law?
No, we haven't got the page two. Sally was pointing the zoning, the town...
It's something that when it comes in, it will be...
Oh, we're back to Newpaltz.
Yeah, we're looking at a couple at once. The email address, actually, I think is probably reasonable to request at this point.
Sure.
So I'll highlight that. Okay, so...
This also.
Now, what needs to be added to this are the requirements for use in area variances. Yeah, but let's just do area right now. Uh-huh. So I like the idea on the Cannondagwa, or however you pronounce that town, if somebody wants to...
Cannondagwa.
Cannondagwa. You know, they say, "Show that granting the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties." I mean, I want somebody to actually think about that and realize that's one of the criterion that we look at.
Right, yeah, sure.
The second, "Show that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other feasible method that would not require a variance." My only objection is, I'd probably put a couple more lines in here. And I would indicate that these are...
Well, somebody can always attach a sheet.
Right, but I would indicate that these are all required fields. We won't consider it until you've answered these questions.
Good. But with the understanding that if we're talking area variances, they do not have to satisfy every one of them.
Right. Right, but they do have to at least indicate...
Think about them and tell us what they think.
That they have considered it.
Right.
The next one, I would, the three, "Show that the requested area variance is not substantial." I would ask them to calculate the percentage of the variance being requested. And then show... Percentage of variance. Because I don't know that people think in those terms.
That's true.
That's why I think you need to write that in a different set of words that make it very clear what you want.
Well, that's why I'm saying, calculate the percent of the variance requested, and then show...
Would I know what?
No.
I wouldn't know that.
No. That's, that's, that's not anything I even would know how to do.
What?
Calculate the percent.
The percentage of variance. In the case of the theater, it's obvious.
It's a hundred percent.
It's a hundred percent. But when you get to other things...
All you have to do, you guys should know this, right? How you figure percentages?
Variants?
How do you figure percentages?
Okay, if somebody's...
What's variance meant?
Okay, if somebody would like to have a property, you have a, you know, we require, you know, so many...
Well, do it simply.
I mean, I can always calculate this.
If you have one acre and you need two acres, and you want a variance for another acre, that's a fifty percent variance.
Yes.
Or is that a hundred percent?
I think that's actually a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent. Okay, then, then if you want a half an acre variance, then it'd be fifty percent. If you want a quarter acre variance, it's twenty-five percent. If you want whatever, you know, you just keep breaking it down to them.
It would seem to me that we could offer assistance at the building department.
I think if you write it in English, it might work.
Okay, well... Well, I think it should be somehow indicated. Okay, if somebody would like to help me with my English here...
Well...
No, no, I'm just saying...
Maybe we could just ask them...
We're saying that we would like the form to be friend, user-friendly.
No, I am agreement with you.
And what I'm saying is if I say to somebody, "Calculate the percentage of the variance you are asking for,"
Yes.
what does that mean?
Well, you say, "Show what the percentage of the variance," you know, is.
Can I ask, can I have a sedition?
Yes.
Don't you ask how much area they have and how much they want to add?
Very good.
Then somebody, then...
We're glad you came.
No, I mean, that's, that's very logical, and it's very clearly understood. And I, as the reader or the applicant, would know exactly what you want me to do. And that's what we're trying. Thank you.
Okay. I still would like them to calculate it as a percentage.
After, after you're done explaining what you want, then you may ask for that.
Okay.
Because then it's, then it's easy to figure out. I mean, take a calculator, and a calculator has percentage on it. I don't know anybody that doesn't have a calculator. And all you have to do is punch the two numbers in and punch percentage.
Okay, so what we could do is we could have an asterisk here, and at the end of the form, we could explain how to calculate the variance.
Okay.
You're going to get another good idea.
You can have like an example of like the easy thing, like you said, like one acre, and then you want two acres.
I know, I agree. I'm just saying where to put it on the form. Because I want to put it on page...
At the bottom with an asterisk.
Yes.
Or you guys could do it yourself, like have a box for just, you guys fill out it. You do the calculation.
Well, we could have the building inspector, you know, the building department. I think that's a good idea.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it would be better to have the building inspector figure out the percentage, but his idea is show what you have and show what you want.
Okay.
And then the building inspector can figure it out from there, and it's something that an ordinary person can do.
And who says the young people don't have a contribution to make?
Did I say that?
No.
Well, this is nice, most of them just sit there.
I'm glad they came.
Yes, I am too.
Okay, I would like, before the person answers the question or the idea, you know, because this is the third item that is to be considered, you know, that we get from the state, which is whether the requested variance is substantial. And I think that there are many ways of thinking how a variance may or may not be substantial. Someone might think, well, you know, that part of the property that, you know, my property butts the neighbor's property, and it's kind of scruffy, and it just really doesn't matter that I'm getting that close to it because they're never over in that part of the yard. So it's not substantial, but they're asking us for a seventy-five percent variance, you know. We would see that as a substantial variance, and they would see, well, you know, how could it bother anyone?
Well, you could put the, you could put the two on that one.
Yeah.
That could be number three. Now, number four, I think, is already answered by number one. I don't see any reason for it to be answered again.
The only reason it is there is because what we get from the state, the first... The only reason it is there is because what we get from the state, the first, um, criterion for an area variance is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by grant, by the granting of the area variance.
Where are you reading?
And, this is what we get from New York State.
That's the first one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The fourth.
And then, this one is about the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. So I think that the first one is a little more focused on the immediate environs. And the fourth one addresses sort of the impact it would have on, on the neighborhood, so it's sort of a larger issue.
A larger issue. Yep.
You know, I mean, is it going to drip water down, you know, past fifteen houses as opposed to just flooding your neighbor's backyard? I mean, I, I don't, but I think that's the difference there.
Yeah, all right, all right, all right, all right.
And, um, and then show that the alleged hardship is not self-created.
That's a good one.
And I think that's a good one. And I think people then aren't surprised when they come before the board and we pull out our little list of criteria. And, you know, they've had a chance to consider it and, you know, really think about it.
Yes.
And, and I think that is very important. Um, so maybe the Canandaigua re, uh, form is just really pretty close to what we need.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um. Yeah, and the one from Auburn, I mean, they ask a lot of questions, do we really need to know how much they paid for the property? No. Um, I mean, they really ask a lot of questions in Auburn. And I don't know that I see anything-
Well, Auburn's a pretty big city.
Yeah.
I don't understand what is, is the Newpaltz form two pages?
Yes, but it combines, it's combining area and use variances.
Okay.
Okay.
And the only reason I put it in here was so you could see what the town was doing. Cause I think their form is easier to read than ours. But I really, I do think the Canandaigua, um, Dagwa, one is-
We're going to quiz you three times, you have to say that in a row.
Why can't we say it from a bit of rest, you know? I'm not a real mediocre speaker.
Just say from the Finger Lakes area.
Thank you, thank you.
But so is Auburn. Okay, so we're going to do something similar to this form regarding use.
Yeah.
So that the, so there'll be a separate one regarding use.
Yeah, so we would have a separate one for use, and now there's somebody that I like for use, hold on. Um, which is not Auburn, I think it might be, okay, is it Milo or Milo?
Milo?
Milo.
Milo.
That one I can't help you with, peignan I can read.
Yeah.
But see, this is a small town, um, up in the Finger Lakes region, so, you know, we have to, we have to think about, when we're doing this, we have to think about where these things are coming from. Are they a city? Are they a town like ours, are they smaller, you know, because it does make a difference.
Do we want that?
When you're a city, you have to be concerned with more, um, I don't know what the word, tightness, that's what I was referred to as.
Yeah. What?
Than you do i- in, in a place that isn't as large, that's not the word I want, I don't know.
Well, the last thing that you have in the package is this thing that says, application for a use variance, which is recommended by, um, you know, the New York State has that Department of State, um, site, actually, one of the things I did while I was sitting in the chair, was I did their little course online, which was quite good. Um, and then I got into this, and I think maybe their, um, their form really has most of what we need.
Oh.
I think that I would like the, um, you know, information about the applicant to be on here as well, I mean, that's not on here.
Everything that you had on the top.
Yeah, so what we would have had for the area variance, well, we would repeat on the use variance.
Well, they've got that over on the back with those questions.
Yeah, and then on the back, I think they've got, um, you know, a nice, oh, actually, they put it at the bottom there. Just for consistency, I'd put them, you know, have them sort of structured the same, put them at the top. But then, these questions, again, are what we need for the use variance, don't you think?
The criteria questions.
The criteria, yeah. And they say, attach all supporting material. Cause, I mean, we don't get that many use requests, really.
That's true.
And, um, you know, watch, I say that.
Now, a use request would be an SUP, right?
Well, there's-
I was just gonna ask that date, I did, it, wouldn't it?
Sally, are you reading my mind?
I think so.
Uh-oh.
Or am I reading your mind?
I don't know.
Well, aren't, aren't-
Well, I've been known to do that.
Aren't SUPs required for all of the businesses? You know, like the restaurants and things on Main Street, I mean, isn't that part of what they have to do?
Well, I've never understood why we have so many special use permits.
They don't have the code, let me, let me see if I can look that up. I think that there's something about, you've gotta get an SUP for most of what you wanna do at a restaurant or a bar on, on Main Street, is sort of the suppression I have.
But why?
Well, it could apply to other things too, I mean, you, you, um, I, I can't remember the example. But if, if you have a business and it specifies a certain thing, and then you wanna add this other little thing, which is not detrimental to anything, but it's not in the description, that's what you need an SUP for, am I correct?
Yeah, that, one of the reasons.
Well, okay.
So it doesn't just, it doesn't just apply to bars and restaurants.
Am I adding?
No, no.
No, if, if I had, if I wanted to have an ice cream store, and the building had been used for an ice cream store before, that's a continuing use.
Right.
Right.
But then, I decide I wanna sell candy. In addition, and candy hasn't been sold before.
You might need an SUP.
What, that's my question, what I need.
But you might, but you might not.
But you might not.
Depends on how the code's written.
If, 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 if what you're selling is, is sufficiently related, you might not need a special use permit.
Would you say it was, say I wanted to sell antiques and ice cream?
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's a better, that's a better example.
Okay. Then, I would need a special use permit?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Why?
Because the two things aren't related. It depends on how-
What's approved in that zone?
I, I read this a long time ago.
Yeah, but say they were both approved in that zone. Why would I need a special use permit to sell antiques and ice cream?
It depends on what, what it states in the law right now.
Right.
As to what is allowed.
In that area.
In that-
And if they're both allowed, then I have no problem with it.
Okay, so I wouldn't need?
No.
No.
Okay. So it all, so a use variance, to go back, when would I ask for a use variance that wasn't a special use permit?
Well, certainly, the first step in applying for a use permit is a recognition that it is not allowed in the code.
In the zone.
In, in that particular zone.
Okay, that's a use-
Yeah, and-
You're going to buy a property and you wanna know what you can do with it.
Okay, so then I decide that I want to, the, the zone says-
Don't, don't confuse what is a use variance with a special use permit.
That's what I'm asking you.
There are two different things.
Give me, no, no, give me an example of why I would come to you for a use variance.
Because what is offered in the code will not allow you to do what you wanna do with your property.
That's a use variance, that has nothing to do with special use permits.
Yeah.
Special, right, right.
It's that big farm that you want to put in residential.
Well, the board has to, uh, uh, has to permit special use permits, not us.
Right.
Yeah.
So-
But the, Sally's asking about the grounds for that.
Yeah.
Uh.
So it would come to you?
Right, for a variance.
For a variance, to be able to change the use of a building that's allowed now, but I wanna do something that's not allowed.
Else. Right.
And I, it has nothing to do with special use permits, it's that I wanna do X-
No. Yes.
In an area where it's not allowed.
And that's the purview of this board.
Okay, so there, we have to be-
What is important to understand, and what I would want the applicant to understand, is that this, unlike the area variance, is much stricter and demanding. You have to satisfy every one of these items in order to get, uh-
That needs to be clear, okay.
A variance for you.
Needs to be clear, okay.
All four must be met and satisfied.
Yes.
Oh, and maybe we wanna change the form of the area as well to indicate?
Yes, the area, the area variance would indicate that generally, the zoning board shall consider each of these items, but it may not necessarily require, uh, that they be addressed.
Okay.
That's a good clarification.
All right. So wait, that would be on the area variance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On variance. Okay, you'll help me.
It, it, it's tremendously important for the applicant to know that that's what's required.
Yes, yes, but with the use variance, all-
Oh.
Every one of them has to be satisfied.
Must be satisfied.
Okay.
That's good, I mean, that clarified it for me?
Yeah. I'm glad.
That's why he gets, that's why he gets the big bucks.
Yeah, everybody's still sets.
Wait, now I'm still going on the special use permit thing. Well.
Now, how do we feel about the front of this use variance, uh, the model from New York State?
I thought you were gonna put all of the information that you were gonna require on the other form, right on top.
At the top.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't like the way they have that top, and then, the other question I have is, you know, like, we don't need all these little office use only things.
No.
But, but, do we need someplace where we write something on the application and it gets signed?
I think so.
What do you mean by write something?
Once the decision is made.
Once the decision has been made.
Oh, oh, yes, oh, yes.
That, that's why I wanted to talk about the front, denial was based on the following sections of the zoning code. So that would be something we would fill in at that meeting.
Yes. We, we should, we should indicate the justification for the decision we make.
You want a place for the chair's signature or all member's signatures? A place noted how the vote was?
Okay, but the applicant, what did, what did, the, if you look at that front thing, it says, the applicant's appeal
We haven't done that in the past.
From a decision of the zoning enforcement officer concerns the following, denial of an application for a building permit or denial for an application for a certificate of occupancy. I think that's the denial, um, that is referred to down below there.
Uh-huh.
That, they made the appeal for, yeah, yeah, so they made it appeal for proposed activity.
So that's the building inspector fills in. Great.
I mean, I don't know, when we get a use variance, have they gone to the building inspector first to find out they can't do that? I mean, is that the first step?
Sure, why would, why would they come here unless they knew?
Yeah. Everything has to go to the building inspector first, and then the building inspector either says yes or no.
Okay, and so-
Or it could come from the planning board.
Or it could come from the planning board, yeah.
So you need something that says on your form, referral made by?
Okay, yeah, so the, and so the denial would be, oh, so it could be a referral from the planning board?
Yes, indeed it could.
Yes.
So we'll add a third category there, referral.
Well, it could just be a checkoff box, the building inspector, the planning board, who else?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, what if it was something that they just knew right off the bat, you know, that it's, um-
It doesn't matter, they, they really have to go through, uh, the, the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's where you apply for it and-
So we need the building inspector to sign and date the decision. And then, and then this other side is the stuff that would get it to us.
Something, something we haven't done in the past, that Sally suggested a few minutes ago, is that when the decision is rendered by the ZBA, the possibility of including on the form an indication of what the vote was. And at least the signature of the chair.
Yeah.
Why, why would that be important?
Well, what's there to make for the vote was?
Record keeping, if you're going to have the form.
If you are ultimately, if you are ultimately facing an Article seventy-eight, like the most extreme case.
Yeah.
Uh, if indeed the vote of the ZBA was a unanimous vote, rather than a three to two vote, uh, it might have a different kind of weight when it is heard by the judge.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so we would have another-
In addition to that, you would, you would have a verification to your official minutes.
Just a couple of checkboxes, unanimous, not unanimous, and then indicate.
So you would have two corresponding things, you'd have your minutes, and you would have the form.
Yes, right, that's true. Cause the minutes would show that, yeah.
So they should be consistent and would carry more weight, I agree with Carl, that they would carry more weight. That the form was signed in the presence.
Where would you get that, that back here?
Back there where the, the decision is, is reported.
Well, then, chair, I mean, the decision.
Yep.
Yeah, so we would have a section for-
So we could have like a, like a little unanimous or not unanimous, and then indicate the vote.
Yeah, the vote. Well, even if it's unanimous, I think you would indicate the vote.
I just would indicate the vote, I would not have unanimous.
Yeah. I would record the date.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because I mean, if it was three people as opposed to five people being unanimous, that's also more weighty.
Okay. I'd say you're-
You know, if, if you're-
Getting unanimous doesn't tell you how many people were voting.
Yeah, you don't, yeah.
Eyes, knees, extensions, things that come in.
Yep, 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 yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Kelly's right.
Yep. Um, right, and so, and we also wanna have the date, and then a place through the signature of the ZBA chairman. Do we want to have anything like a little box for comments that the chairman could make any comments?
I think that-
If you're comments, the better.
Yeah, yeah.
Frank Kelly.
You can't, you can't, you can't handle it if they don't, if they don't make any comments.
No comment. Okay, okay, I'm not, there's an off-road, Carl. No, 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 I'm just, I'm just trying to-
Whatever's said is in the, in, in the record anyway, it's on there and it's over there as we come to find out.
Okay. All right, so, that, we can work out, you'll help me on this?
I, 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 I have to tell you how indebted we are to you for doing this.
I think it's brilliant, yes. I agree.
Oh, keep buttering me up.
Well, but I really have had the feeling as the evening has gone on and we've talked about it.
Yeah.
That you and Vicky are, are clearly ready to do this.
Nicely done, I've never seen anybody get out and work that nicely.
Well, all right, ha- having said that, I, I, I will be, I will be happy if you wish me to,
Yes.
to review your product.
Thank you so much.
Well, I, I, I would bring to it my expertise as an English teacher.
Now, now you know why I enjoy this board, it's so much fun.
Well, Carl, maybe I better have you come and look over my application for an open studio residency at, uh, Haystack Mountain Craft School on Bear Island, Maine, then.
I would be happy to.
Okay, so, we are talking about, let me just sort of sum up what I think we're talking about. We are talking about creating, one, a zoning enforcement complaint form.
Right.
We are talking about, two-
And that's for just anybody. And that's for just anybody who has a problem?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, you know, I mean, my only question on that is, is that something we should ask the zoning enforcement people to do?
I'd review it with Kurt and, yeah.
Yeah, so we could talk with Kurt, cause I mean, I, I don't wanna say like, you know, we're coming in there and we're organizing your office for you.
No, I think he'd appreciate this, so.
Yeah, but I think it would be helpful for us and then, you know, particularly, I'd like them to design the part about where they render the decision. But it would be understood by all of us that a zoning enforcement officer's decision was in writing on this form, end of story, nothing else is something we're gonna act on.
Yeah.
That's what we respond to.
And, and in addition to running it.
And I think that's very wise.
Yeah.
Running it by our building officer, we should run it by our planner as well.
Oh, I would, I would start with Kurt, yeah, cause I think he's, yeah. Okay, the second form would be a form to appeal a decision of the code enforcement officer or the planning board. So you would appeal one or the other.
They, aren't they really different, though?
Why?
Well, they're different, I, I think they can sort of be the same forms.
Well, I can think of.
I don't think you need two forms.
Well, just, you, you may not.
Let's, let's not get too much paperwork, we'll end up being like the Italians. Don't you know about that?
Thank you, Mr. Politically Correct.
I'm never politically correct. I just stick to my mind and everybody knows that.
You heard that.
Look at her, so.
Did you all get all of your forms signed?
Oh, we got more paper with us.
Uh, does anybody need?
Did you get anything out of the meeting?
Yes.
They made a contribution to the meeting, what do you mean?
And you'll be on TV in a few days.
Thank you.
Well, that's a lot of.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have fun.
Thank you.
You know, what do you do, go back and report on it to your pig?
I think you gotta do that.
It, I have to say, tell you, from my point of view, if you have to visit
Send your friends.
any governmental division in the village of Newburg, this is the best one to visit.
That's all you can hear?
Oh, my gosh.
Don't go to the police.
I've had more fun with them.
Yeah, we have, we have fun.
You do, and, and, you know, you get a lot done, but it's all done in such good spirit.
Yes, yes, well, it's a good board.
After what you've been through recently, it must really be a joy for you.
That's what I was gonna plead, please meet once a month, I need, I need that.
What is this like, a vacation for you, Sally?
Yes, okay, getting back to this, Sally, so.
Let me go back to, cause Dave, you raised a question.
The planning board or the code enforcement, why would you see it as two things that are separate?
Okay, let me just talk it out, cause I'm not sure, okay. I'm before the planning board and the planning board says to me, sorry, you need to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Okay, now.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a place, cause I can think of a couple of instances that I asked Carl about, where you guys have the right, and I don't know, the right to say to the planning board, you are incorrect in sending this to us now? You need to do more work yourselves?
No. And I, I was about to make a comment, and that was that in my memory, I can't recall a case in which people appealed a decision of the planning board to the ZBA.
I can.
Oh, tell me about it.
The movie theater. You were sent, as I understand it, the movie, the cinema was sent to the ZBA for a decision.
Yes.
But not all of the planning board decisions had been made.
Right, they were only looking for something about a budget.
And so it seems to me that it only should come to you at the end of their decision making and only if there really does need something decided by you.
I have no problem with that, that makes sense, but that doesn't.
Okay, so that's my question.
But that, but that doesn't, that doesn't present an appeal by a decision of the planning board brought to us.
We would be the ones who would be appealing by saying, we don't think it should've come to us.
Well.
No, but then.
No, no, all. Let's face it. The things that come to us are usually routed
Yeah.
by the building inspector.
Yes.
Not the planning board?
No. I said usually.
Okay.
Sometimes the planning board simply says, you know, you're gonna need a variance, so you go get a variance. And that may not be the building inspector speaking,
Yeah.
but at least in practice, the building inspector is aware of this and says, yeah, they're right. So-and-so needs a variance, deal with it.
And that's what happened recently.
I mean, these are not, these are hypothetical questions, not, because I,
Yeah.
I think anybo, is there a point at which the planning board would say to Vicky, you're gonna need a variance, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Now, wouldn't it be better for me to have made all of the planning decisions before I send her
Yeah.
to you, because it may be that she comes to you and then they're not done yet and they reject her plan anyway.
That's, but that's, in practice, that's unlikely to happen.
But in theory, could it?
Well.
Could it?
Let, let, let me review for a moment the process. Generally, the planning board looks at an application and says, in effect, the dimensions of this particular application call for the possibility of such and such a variance.
Okay.
This generally is reported to the building inspector by the planning board.
Okay.
The person is sent by the planning board to the building inspector, who clarifies with the applicant what it is that is desired and why it's desired, and then says, now go to the.
Okay, so there's never a direct referral?
No.
No.
By the planning board
No. No.
to the ZBA?
No.
Is the planning board to the building inspector
Right.
Yeah.
to the ZBA, so you don't ever have a planning board referral, you only need.
No, but you do have planning board decisions that someone could appeal.
That's a different issue.
But we're, we're talking about here.
But that's what we're talking about now, it's a different form.
We are talking about second form to appeal the decision of code enforcement officer or planning board.
That's what I'm asking.
The planning board can make a decision
That is applicable.
with, that, that an applicant, and I mean, that's.
But it still has to go to the building inspector before it comes here.
That's what I'm trying to get clear, Dave.
This is what Carl's saying, has to go.
It never comes directly from the planning board to the ZBA.
Well, all right, now let me just try to understand. The planning board makes a decision that the applicant does not agree with. It goes to the planner or to the, um, code enforcement officer. But the code enforcement officer, in fact, is not making any decision because the code enforcement officer cannot either affirm or overturn a decision of the planning board. The, 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 the code enforcement officer is a conduit there.
Mm-hmm.
But the decision being appealed is the appeal of the planning board and not of the conduiting of the code enforcement officer. So they can appeal the decision of the planning board. The only, the only appellate function is us.
We're.
Yeah, we're.
So the decision being appealed is a decision of the planning board.
But it could be a decision separate and a part of the planning board, it could be an appeal of the code enforcement officer independent of.
Yes, it could.
Two different kinds of appeals.
We are in agreement.
Two different forms.
We have, no, we're going to have two checkboxes.
I wouldn't. Because I think they're very vastly different.
So we would need to, we would need to think it through and cut up and come, come up with wording for the form first.
Okay.
A question.
Yes.
Appeal of a planning board decision can be done by what party?
Say it again, Vicky.
Planning board makes a decision.
Yes.
I'm a neighbor, I can appeal?
Sure, anybody can appeal.
Okay, I can appeal the planning board's decision to allow whatever.
Yes.
Interesting. That doesn't often come, no.
No.
But your form better of.
It generally go, would go to.
Your form better reflect the ability of both.
Yeah, but that's my point.
I agree, and that was, that's where I began, I just didn't know how to get there.
This is not gonna hit the.
Okay, so I, I can see. And, and likewise, the code enforcement officer could make a decision that was agreeable to the property, one would be disagreeable to the neighbor.
So the neighbor also could appeal the code enforcement, okay?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yes, so we have to have something that says, what is your relationship to this property?
This project.
The project or the.
I think that's very important.
Okay. We gotta work that out first.
I'm telling you.
I'm just thinking about.
I missed, I missed this last one.
Yes.
The statement that the person appealing has to have some.
Relationship.
No, just that we want them to explain their relationship.
Oh, okay.
Are you the applicant or are you a belligerent neighbor?
Well, but.
Yeah.
And have it say, hey, belligerent.
Yes, don't you think?
And perhaps, and, you could have a checkbox, belligerent, unreasonable, oversensitive.
To quote, to quote Hillary Clinton.
Yes.
Does it, does it really make a difference?
Yes.
Yeah, cause I think that you do wanna know, um, I think you do wanna know who's making the appeal. I mean, if, um.
Okay.
And, and just, just as we wanna know on, on the area variance, if somebody is requesting a variance for a property they do not own and somebody else owns the property, um.
Is that even allowed?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah, people come before, I mean, this is how they avoid self-created hardships. They ask before they buy, very good idea.
Oh, no, we, you already dealt with one of those.
Yeah.
When I first joined you.
Yes, I believe we were labeled communists and socialists as a result of our decision on that one.
However, is it fair that the form is that? Are you the owner of record?
Um.
Because it seems to me, and tell me if I'm wrong, it seems to me for somebody to come and say, you've got to do this or I'm not buying the property or not even share that with you. It seems to me there's a big difference between a person who's bought a house or a property in good faith
Yeah.
and somebody who's exploiting or wishes to exploit the system.
Well, we had to, I had to do that for my mother-in-law's property.
What, exploit the system?
No, 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 we had to subdivide it before he bought it.
I, I.
It was, it was a half an acre lot and he wanted to put two houses on it, but we had to subdivide it before he bought it. So we did.
I, I think it is reasonable that the person who owns the property be aware of the fact that somebody is asking for a variance on the property. So if someone does not own the property, um, you know, we get the owner's signature
I don't know whether it's legal.
saying that they are in agreement with this appeal being made.
Seems to me, in, in this kind of discussion, we need Kurt and or attorney's, uh, insights.
I don't think you could do.
We've done it before. Yes, I concur with that.
I, I do too, cause I don't know whether it's legal.
Right, I think we may be jumping off here where it's inappropriate.
I mean, I think, I think it's proper, but I don't know whether it's legal.
Canandahe is doing it. Canandahe has it on the form. If you, if property owner, if other than the applicant, has to sign on here saying this is okay.
Then it must be legal.
So I'm guessing it's legal.
Well, maybe.
There we go.
But in general, what we're doing here.
No, I think that.
Once, once you got everything the way you want it, then, yeah, double track it.
It needs to be. Yeah. Yes, and, and I think, yeah, we should run it past Kurt.
But I do believe there's a big difference. I do believe that there is, in, in my own mind, it's a bit problematic if somebody is trying to get something in order. Do you understand what I'm saying? It seems to me if you really believe that what, you wanna be in the community, you wanna do, you live here and you want to be a part of the community, then you buy the property and then you come and.
Well, no, we, we did run into that, remember?
Oh, we've run in, you've run into it twice that I'm aware of.
You remember the, um, Planned Parenthood place and that guy wanted to buy it and
That's the one.
Yeah.
And he wasn't gonna buy it unless he could get a.
A variance.
A variance.
Well, but see, I think, I'm not sure, I think a board should be put in that position.
We deal with it all the time.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sally, I, I would rather have.
We could say no.
You know.
Yeah, no, I, I don't see, I don't see what the problem is here because we, we've already dealt with a thing like that.
Yeah, and, and I think Sally, that when we have this criterion of a self-created hardship, I think we need to make the effort to help people avoid self-created hardships.
That I don't disagree with, and I think the signature of the owner
And by saying. Yeah.
Would.
Would help.
Yeah, would help.
Oh, no, I think the signature of the owner absolutely has to be on there because you don't want somebody, um, yeah, taking advantage of someone
Exactly.
by getting, by finding out in advance, they can get a variance, but representing to the owner that, you know, what can I do with this property?
Exactly.
And then, you know, with knowing that they can have.
Right, it, it's to avoid exploitation of people who may not know.
Exactly, so if, if the owner signs the form here, we know that the owner is aware
Of what's going on.
Then I think that is helping the prospective buyer avoid a self-created hardship because if we make them wait until they brought, bought the property, I think they have more of an argument that this really isn't a self-created hardship because how could I have known this before I bought the property?
On the other hand, you're avoiding a self-created hardship for somebody who might be trying to take advantage of somebody.
This is too complicated for me, hold on.
That's what I'm more concerned about.
Well, you know, we've already dealt with this, so I, I don't understand what the problem is.
There is none now.
Okay, so looking, here's what I, I propose we do, we've, we, we're to the point of being punch happy. Let Vicky and I, over the next, say, six weeks, cause I gotta be out of town a couple of weeks, I got some big stuff going up. But let's try and mock up four forms. And the first one, we will, the one that would be the code enforcement, zoning enforcement complaint form, we would do something very skeletal, give it to building department to do with, you know, to have input, fairly substantial input right away. And then I agree that we want the input of the planning, um, department and I do think a lawyer oughta look this stuff over.
Mm-hmm, I do too.
Oh, yeah.
And I, and I also.
And just remember, just remember that Burlington's a city.
Okay, no, I, I understand that, but I'm just, the idea I wanted to get across is right now we've got alphabet soup going on a form.
Yep.
And, you know, then there's the short environmental impact thing that we still have to keep on that form. But I, I think a lot of people don't realize that the, you know, four, four or five criteria are what the decision is going to be made upon and they don't reflect upon them before they come before us. And I would like to have a form that helps them focus on what is going to help us make a good decision and a fair decision, and so they feel it's fair. So they're not blindsided by, oh, that's what you're deciding on. You know, it's not that you're putting in, you know, marble counters and it's gonna be a beautiful house, it's, how does it impact the neighbors, how does it impact the neighborhood? Um, is it the least variance you can request?
There is another. There is another service here
Yes.
that we're performing by this process.
Yes.
And that is that very few people who come to us who are not builders or developers understand zoning at all.
Yeah.
And to walk them through it with forms that are clear and easily understood by them is literally to relieve them of some of the tension and anxiety.
I would think, yeah.
And to educate them.
Yes.
But I mean, it would be scary if you really weren't a lawyer with boards and you had to come to the zoning board of appeals.
It is scary, I.
You wouldn't, I mean, it would be scary, not if you're.
Scary for some, not really scary for others.
Year, years ago before I was a member of the zoning board and knew absolutely nothing about.
How long ago was that, Carl?
I, I wanted, I wanted to erect a fence. I was having some difficulty with my neighbor over the property line and I figured a fence would help. But I wanted a fence that was higher than permitted.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I've been there too.
So I was told by the building inspector, go ask for a variance. Which I did. I cannot tell you how I prepared for that, I took photographs. I, I walked the land.
Dave recordings of the confrontations with the neighbor.
And I was shaking when I came before.
I imagine.
Wow.
And it was only because of the real understanding and the compassion and empathy of Richard Corwin, who was then the chairman, that I got through that experience without a heart attack.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, we all have been around a long time. And so, we don't realize how scary
It is.
it could be. I mean, I think we ought to have smelling salts on the table.
I, I will say.
Tylenol.
I will say, have a listen.
Okay, I think we have to adjourn.
Happy birthday.
Whose birthday is it?
Abraham Lincoln.
Whose birthday?
Yeah, I don't know why they didn't name, I don't know why they didn't name him Lincoln.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
They did, they named him Jasper.
Uh, I had a phone call from my son in London that I.
Yes.
Uh, because this is Lincoln's birthday and he is a big Lincoln person. There is a statue of Winston Churchill in a park in London. And in that same park, there is a statue of Abraham Lincoln. And David decided that because it was Lincoln's birthday, he would go out and get flowers and put the flowers by the statue of Abraham Lincoln.
Oh.
So he bought red, white and blue flowers
Yes.
and took them to the statue and
Got arrested.
Somebody saw it and said, let me take a pic.
Oh, boy.
Oh.
Oh, boy, now he's a YouTube.
So I'm awaiting the picture.
Oh, how neat is that, how's David doing? Good night, Dave, pack them all.
Thank you, David.
Wait, did we, did we adjourn the meeting?
I, I will say this, listening to the discussion tonight.
Wait, wait, no, we, we didn't.
I realized that this group has a fairly jaunty view of human nature.
We need to adjourn. Before you leave.
Are you adjourned?
Yeah, we've got enough. Why don't we adjourn so Dave can leave?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I write the letter of recommendation for the argument and I send it to the clerk of.
Send it to your clerk, Kelly, who.